Can I borrow your product for it? Here's my address. Father's day gift for my daughter, Bryce.
Michael, would you mind grabbing me a wire? I heard you say you were...
Yeah, I was just gonna grab a copse out of there.
Oh, yeah, that's, thank you.
Mediocre.
Mediocre, not too bad. A lot of checking them off. Uh, good, a lot of them. Wasn't that long, but it was good. It was a 14th. General Chair, it went fine. Now to their vote from the Chair. Well, I got there Wednesday evening, right there. Went to dinner with a couple of cable court members. Most of our meetings. Little break in the afternoon, I'm very excited. And then Friday, there was Saudi Arabia's really trying to expand mining development in Saudi Arabia. I heard a lot of comments. They were holding a presentation over at one of the hotels on Friday. And we, I left on Friday, late Friday afternoon, so I went over there to the... What they're doing is, is fine, but it was more just promotion of Saudi Arabia. Yeah. Uh, British guy.
And back?
Yeah.
Is it Logan?
Yeah, Logan, Logan, he's our director. But it was good. I liked it. The weather was decent, too.
All of your work?
It's just a few days. All right, it's seven o'clock. I will call meeting for Tuesday, June 20th to order. First up on the agenda, Ray, you came to talk about garage doors.
Yes.
Let me just make sure these guys have the... Okay, great. Thanks for everyone's help.
That is, well, I think it's one. Just saying this money and emergency management. The reason I'm asking for is because emergency management, let's say, is downstairs. To store the signs.
Oh, the...
The signs, it, when we get it.
Okay, are you looking to do one door or one?
Well, I got that action yesterday, and go another call for two or three.
Yeah.
Oh, it's five thousand dollars for three.
Okay.
Instead of seventeen hundred and six for one.
Which would be fifty-two hundred for three.
It's not two, five thousand.
No, no, no.
Oh, whatever, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we can do all three for five thousand dollars?
Five thousand dollars and two cents.
Okay. And just looking at the emergency management. There is ARPA money available as well.
Where, no road footage in there?
No.
No. Really, just as I, you know, to give us a little more space to keep out of fire station. And we could also put, you know, barricades down there as well. The police would be easier to kind of get, bring down the barricades in the back building. Behind all the trucks, so we have to kind of trudge through, move stuff around in the barricades. It might be easier to keep some of the barricades down there if the police need it. You know, Brian needs, you know, as a road agent, he might need barricades. You know, it'd be easier, easier access for everyone. So that, you know, in addition to the two, the two sides, you know, side ones, we can put together. If you probably want some barricades and, you know, whatever ready, can put in there.
The chief from down there, because he had seen downstairs.
Oh, the garage here?
So he got the idea, gee, it's a good place to put cruisers in the one room. On the south side, he had a mile wide, which is true.
Can you fit a cruiser in there? Is the garage long enough? I can't remember.
Oh, yeah, definitely. It's a whole, whole width of, with a dump.
Right, and they used to put trucks out there, right? When it was a post office? Did they put trucks in there?
Maybe Martin had cons made one time.
Oh. I didn't know that. Other questions? Anybody ask about this?
And we've used Brian before. He did the, he did the doors, fire station. He does, he does good work. He's a, he's a former lieutenant at Newmarket. And he's got his garage door business. And he's, he's very reasonable. He always gives us a pretty great... So I don't know if he needed us to get more quotes.
So anything over five thousand dollars technically requires you multiple quotes, put it down. So coming in at seventeen hundred wasn't necessarily a written one, at least one written quote. So if we go over five thousand dollars, we're probably going to need multiple.
So what if we were to do it for forty-nine, ninety, and ninety-five? Is that okay?
Technically?
Yeah.
Qualifies out of the policy.
Okay, all right.
We'll need a written quote for it, Tom.
Okay.
If you guys can do that.
Okay.
Again, you guys have any issues, concerns?
My only concern is that I wonder if this starts falling under maintenance for the building? And what did we decide would be, who would be responsible for that kind of maintenance? It was the water department, right? Maintenance of the building?
Well, yeah, it's the building is going to turn over eventually, at some point.
Our lawyer is working on all the documents for a closing. I think what they're going to shoot for is at one of the July meetings, bring the evidence here. So we'll let you know. And we have one of the items for tonight is scheduling July meeting dates.
So one of the other things, too, is, you know, just keeping that building more secure by putting those doors on. By not having any doors on, it's not embarrassing, so.
Yeah, I mean, the town certainly has an interest in it, especially if we're going to be showing the current tech.
And to answer Jack's question, maintenance on buildings, a lot of products responsibility. This is a bit more maintenance and doors.
Are there doors down there now?
Yes.
But they're not secure.
Oh, gosh.
They're thirty, forty years old.
The way, the, the way literally we'll open, open our garage doors down there.
I'm just wondering as a, as a precedence, right? Because this is technically a building that is being turned over to the water department. So therefore, you know, with this kind of expenditure, is this something that the town should be looking at? Or is it more something that the water department needs to find funding on? That's my question. Because, I mean, it's maintenance to that building, right? I'm not opposed to paying for it. I just want to make sure that we're clear about where the, the responsibility is.
So, so just to fly, like, into that. It is, you know, fire department using it, the police department can use it. So it's not just the water department that's going to use that. And, you know, so it will be, you know, basically the water department. Even if the town, you know, I'm sure you wouldn't have a problem.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, it's just keeping, keeping it as secure.
Hope it?
I see the gray line that was getting added on that point. And it is a price issue. I fully support him, the door, the building is pure. So I just somehow we skip this cap.
Okay.
To make sure we do invite the numbers.
Sure.
Representing the whole, the, the use of mine set of purchases and sale and content on it. And there's no way that the water department can get any of these ARPA numbers, is there?
Uh, no, the town can't, simply, the town has flexibility with respect to the order.
But does it qualify? I don't know that it would qualify.
Well, technically, right now, the town still owns that building.
Yeah, and it's about, I agree with that.
I mean...
Well, we own the building, but is the ARPA ones, can we use them for building maintenance like that? I don't know that we can't, is what I'm saying.
Actually, we, under the, under the revised guidance from the ARPA from April, I think the revised guidance is April. So what they, what they did was change the guideline rules. And you remember how we talked about last year, there were categories. So basically, they were getting, they were getting a lot of pushback from municipalities about the categories and the town's ability to suspend it. And so what they basically said was, anything up to five million dollars, you can take as impacted revenue. And which basically allows the town total flexibility on utilization of the funds instead of having it in the buckets that they had defined. Before, there was a formula where for new fields, approximately sixty thousand dollars could be basically allocated as lost revenue, which would give us flexibility. But the rest of it would have to fall into the buckets. And remember, we had all those discussions last year about that. Well, they changed the guidance, so now everything, basically, all the funds that we get fall under the lost revenue, which provides maximum flexibility.
So no restrictions, essentially, how to use them?
Correct, since, yep, under the new guidance.
Question, can we allocate that to those ARPA's?
Yes.
Too bad, though. We could, we could do that. Fine line that you brought up, Jacky, where the town is doing the maintenance.
What do you want to do?
Yeah, you know...
You understand what I'm doing, man?
Yeah.
Trying to thread the needle.
Right, but it's still, like, we're in a purchase and sale, we're in an active contract with them over a building. That's where my concern is, is that technically, you still own the building, yes, but we're in an active contract with them. So just in terms of, you know, is that an appropriate expenditure? Is the question.
It's a, it's a... And certainly, then, can we give ERB, somehow, five thousand dollars to the water department? Since it's a choice of use building and avoid threading that needle that you're talking about? Which I totally understand your point on. People, I think their worst demand would be the building they have. You've got the money, the budget, I don't know what's... You know, don't use all that ARPA money, use it for something, something else.
Well, I mean, in, in, in a sense, yeah, the ARPA money is now, is now a kind of a, kind of a reserve fund for a variety of things.
Yeah.
My concern would be, and this is really where I want to come in the conversation with you, which is, so up to date, emergency management has spent about a little over seven thousand, about seventeen thousand dollar budget.
Yep.
What is your expectation for the back half of the year in terms of spending the remaining funds? Because, yes, we could utilize some emergency management funds, but at the same time, I don't want to end up come November without suddenly blowing a hole in the emergency management side.
I don't think we have an issue at all.
Okay.
If you don't have any, the expenditures, we're, you know, see what's, you know... Yeah, we can, I don't know, that's money, you know, that might be a piece of that money, too.
That might be hard pressed for, for that.
Yeah, well, I mean...
I, I think we have other options, I don't think we need to, need to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I, I'm certainly supportive of this. I understand the, the concern about water department versus town farms. I mean, I would argue, as, we are still technically the owner of the building. And more importantly, if we're going to actually store, whether it's a cruiser, whether it's, you know, siding, our radar stuff can probably go down there, stuff for the road agent, I, I would, I would see our, our support for this being certainly in the interest of the town in coming up with a solution here, so.
I'll concur with it, but again, I just want to make sure we thread the needle.
Well, now I'm wondering, do we need to have an agreement signed with the town departments for use of that area of the building, since technically the water department owns it?
I'm sure we can come up with an agreement to have access.
Just as a side, like, should we have an agreement in place?
Yeah, it's a simple, I think a simple letter agreement allowing us access on a twenty-four hour basis. That'd be fine. We can, we can draft that.
It's going to be walk-in.
Yeah. Right. Available for, yeah, the key agents.
So, yeah, then, you know, then everybody can have a key to it or whatever. But just in terms of, since it's not technically a town building.
Right.
Since there's no way of getting upstairs from it.
From the bike basement, yeah. Yeah, we can't get into the water department here.
I'm going to change our rates.
It is, we do your bill.
Zero.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we utilize, if you guys can go and get a formal quote, that half the funds will come from the ARPA, half from emergency management.
Yep.
And we'll work with you on a letter agreement in terms of access, so the town can be assured of access to that as a, as a solution to, to resolve the garage door issue at the moment.
One second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I do have a question for you, Ray, before you go.
Ask what?
Bills for the town, for the water bills. So when I get my water bill, I have a bond payment that I have to make. Is the town, in the agreement that we made with you for services, is the town still responsible for those bond payments? Or are you waiving all bills to the town for water and sewer?
No, the bond payment stays with it.
The bond payment stays with it? Okay.
It's spread out amongst all uses.
Okay.
Amongst all uses.
Okay. So it's just a usage that has been waived for the town? Thank you.
My quick question for you was, and actually, actually, you're here, too. Jeff, somebody, so, got an email that you got, you and Brian attended the asset management program.
I don't think, it's not quite finished yet.
Okay.
Supposedly one more wrap-up meeting.
And so they talked about the highway department needs a tablet for this? What exactly, if you can just describe what's going to be on the tablet? Is it going to be all the maps and, and, and information that they collected?
Yes.
Okay.
It's really going to be designed to maintenance, so when he does maintenance, it's only going to be used for mapping, you know? It's just going to be easier to kind of do that rather than...
To input the information about when, when they're, when they're checking up on, you know, culverts or, or...
Of maintenance, you know, including on...
Yeah, that's what I figured, I figured, I'd asked before, I didn't think included. Okay, great. Because that's going to come up in a minute. I don't know if there's anything else that you guys have for us.
I'm just waiting for the snowboard mapping, so I can start this emergency management plan. We've obviously got that range that we have to use by next year. So I'm probably going to start that process at some point, this one, once that snowboard mapping is planned. And I can get that up to the lady who can handle this. But there'll be some planning, we'll need to do some... We're going to have to have two years to qualify. But I'll, I'll get it all ironed out and I'll get some agendas together. Hopefully, we'll get that.
I assume you'll be discussing this in more detail at the planning board meeting next month?
Yes, yes. I have to get more information from, from my contact, but, you know, I'm just going to wait. I didn't really want to start this until I have this whole board mapping complete, because that's a big part of this, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Want to just stay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Seven fifteen, Lori, calls milk, blue trail. Here.
So, you know, we ended up all the roads now, because I think it's a classic. And very end of it, for, like, about four weeks ago, like, three or four feet up until the border with Newmarket. And then it goes over the big, anyway, once I set it, it became pretty much impossible. It was totally, the water roots, I mean, I personally had to walk up the stone wall and, I mean, it's always been wet, it never was bad. And then Ellen Snyder from Newmarket brought up to me when they ran a tour of the water trail. And other people brought it up to me and she showed a whole stack of it. So, so Ellen threw that one to me that to improve it, we could probably get a trail grant to do that. So we, you know, hopefully, we need to get some gravel in there and go in. So looking maybe at Brian to give us an estimate and then get some idea of cost to fix it. And then, you know, hopefully, trails grant conservation commission funds, possibly to fix it. But I just need to go ahead and see that.
Have you, have you talked to conservation commissioner already about that?
I'm on the conservation.
Oh, okay.
This is why I'm here.
Have, have you, have you had a broader conversation at, at the committee?
Yeah, and I was like, we'll talk to your advisor about it.
Okay. Any idea about, you know, have you talked, you haven't talked to Brian yet about this?
No, and, but it's up to self. And obviously, they are on board, but that's not actually near jurisdiction. So we can access from Neil's Hill Road, it Brian brought in gravel. I mean, the plan would be, hopefully, just to bring in gravel and, you know, fill it in.
Play out.
What you need to do is give an estimate for how much that would cost. So then to proceed with, and another, you know, again, some people complain about it because it really, I mean, I've been walking it for twenty years. And it's just, and I think it's just about the water use. Although, you know, I was like, has there been ATVs or anything? But I couldn't see any real evidence of that.
How big's the area?
Well, it's, when I clocked with, with my run keeper app, it was two hundred and fifty feet long practically. And approximately, it's probably, and, which will be wide. But the thing is, it's hot. So, you know, of course, now it's dry. I took photos of it a couple of weeks ago, but it's all dry. So you can't really tell anything. But it is, it's all, and, you know, again, it used, it used to be, the fifty feet would get wet and, and, you know, you know, bake all over. Now it's just, and it's wired and it's just, it's really bad.
Are there any culverts or, or crossings on the two hundred and fifty feet foot stretch? No, I don't think so. Okay. Any questions? I, yeah, I would, do you want to reach out to Brian? You want us to have Brian in touch with you? What, what do you prefer?
Well, I would like, maybe you, just give Brian a heads up.
Yeah, I, I can, I can do that tomorrow.
Contact him to go down there.
Yep.
Try to get an idea.
I'll, I'll let him know that you'll get, reach out to him, coordinate with him to have him come look and maybe provide a quote to, to fix the trailer at which point in time, you know, depending on that. We'll, I presume, well, I guess the question is then, does the conservation, does conservation want to take the lead in looking at any grant opportunities?
Right, right, yeah, I mean, obviously...
I'm asking if, if you guys want to...
Do that, or you're going to really apply for a grant, but we just need permission.
Yeah, I'll let Brian know that you'll be reaching out to him. That'd be great.
And it's town, and it's not self, or it's...
Yeah, that's a town trial.
Because on the side, it's, well, it's still town, on the other side. It's just some of the eagles, but they, they're kind of, they're definitely...
Yeah, it used to be a road, then definitely converted it to a trail, so it's formally a town trail.
It was a classic trail, but it was a classic trail, which makes it eligible for a trail grant.
Exactly.
Having town responsible, which is part of the reason we keep, has to, for...
Yeah, we didn't have to maintain, we don't necessarily have to maintain. But we also don't have to patrol or anything else because of the classification, so.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I'll let Brian know first, if you want.
Great.
Yes, we're coming. All right. You Lori? You are...
Greg Haslam, law media.
Oh, you're not on the news, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, that's not a problem. Lori, do you know if Lori's coming in?
I have an idea, she's simply on the agenda, I have another question, so.
I saw Jim, yes, third, no, or this one, actually. He was here, we were talking about the recycler, too, so. Okay, well, we'll hold off on her.
Thank you. My name is Greg Haslam, I live at three nineteen Scastic Road. And I'm here just in response to a letter that this board sent me February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two regarding a driveway. And the letter requested that I remove a paved area of airbrushes on the conservation land. I discussed this with at least one of the people at some point in the past. And I actually only know that I have removed the area in question. I hired, I'd say they came and took it out and recycled the asphalt.
This was just a turnaround of the driveway, right?
Exactly, yeah. And so that's going. And if, and if you would like to come over and look at the grass, if they're not going to want to, I'd happy to answer any questions. But I just wanted to come and burst and just tell you that this is from my point of view, it's been taken care of. And if there's any follow-up we need from you, yeah.
No. I appreciate you taking the time to come in, let us know. And that you acted in timely manner, it's always a good thing to see. Any questions?
Thank you.
Concerns? Great. Well, if you have any questions for us, let us know, but again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Have a good season.
You, too.
Thank you.
All right, correspondence, inventory forms for twenty twenty-three. So is a letter from DRA, every... So is a letter from DRA. Every year we have to either approve or decide not to use the PA 28 inventory forms. I'm sure you guys have all seen these. We get them every year. Basically outlines information about particular property, current usage, any changes to the property. I know Sue hates these forms, right?
We do not like these forms.
So we have to make a determination on whether to continue using the PA 28s or not to continue using the PA 28s.
What are your options? Like if we don't use the form?
So just some background. One of the first things that happened when I first got on the board was one of the developers in town ended up contesting the current use change on his property. And we actually ended up before the land appeals board have been conquered for hearings on this. And irony of ironies, the town during the period in question had stopped using the PA 28, which if we had still been using it, would have actually indicated the status of the current use, which at the time this change, it wasn't really valid. And based upon that experience, we decided to reinstitute the PA 28s because it provides information about changes to property that won't necessarily detract on a regular basis. That being said, yeah, it's a pain for them. There's no doubt about it. You know, we certainly asked, and we have a fee associated with the late sufficient. Although, you know, anybody who basically comes and asks for a waiver, you know, about getting in late, we have granted. So again, it's a simple form, provides information that we don't regularly get on, from our assessors since the redoubts only occur every, how often do we redoubt? Five years?
Three.
Three years? So that's the rationale.
So if we weren't using this, it would just be like, however we decide to maintain the logs, like maintain the inventories? If we just, if we don't use the PA 28, do we have to collect our own?
Nope. We just choose not to collect the information.
So we don't collect it at all?
Right.
Okay.
If we want to collect, we do it with this form. I don't, I wouldn't suggest that we come up with our own or anything like that.
So this is more like collect the information or don't?
Exactly. Yeah, that's exactly correct.
So what, I'm just confused here. So if there's a current use issue before it's on the report, it's also duplicate documentation taking things in and out of current use. It's all the lines. Do all the towns, there's another resource for tracking in and out of current use?
Current use records had not, there was an discrepancy in the timing of their current use change. That was the case before the land board.
And you had no record.
And we had no internal records as to that. And again, that was a situation, again, timing being what it was. At that point in time, we decided let's reinstitute the PA 28s.
It takes one?
Six years ago. Yeah, exactly. It's, you know, it's a one-off issue. We said, oh, if only we had been doing this, let's start doing this again. This isn't extremely vital information. It's more of, you know, a situation where you have and not need as opposed to need and not have.
Well, I'll make a motion then to continue using the form, PA 28.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. One more here. I know Sue would hate me for that. All right. All right, I'll leave that. Are we the signatures of the assessment officials here on the form?
What's happening here?
Yeah, a signature of assessment officials.
I have to sign with it.
Yep. Today is the 28th, right?
Twenty years.
Four years. All right. Next item on the agenda is the highway department tablet for asset management. This is in relation to, I just wanted to talk to Jeff and Ray about. So the idea is to have a tablet that the road agent would have that is dedicated to the the mapping and the updated information on maintenance for our stormwater assets. Culverts, drainage, the collection forms that we have in variety of places and just track that. The other benefit to this beyond just having the information for us is that this coincides with the work that Bill Reserve is doing on complying with the general permit for 1988 grade bench. And us showing regular maintenance of our stormwater access is looked upon favorably by the entities that are overseeing that permit. So that's the rationale for this. Questions, comments? They are suggesting that $200 from the ARC would be used for this. Do you think it's going to be less than 200?
That's a cheap table.
It is.
Doesn't require any compliance?
Any what?
Doesn't require any compliance, I imagine.
No, yeah, I think it's just more of a data interface than anything else. You know, he can call up, I mean, the data for the assets will be there. So he can call up for like, you know, a drainage cover. They'll say, okay, if this cover cleaned in at this point in time, the status of it, you know, etc., etc. I'll make a motion that we approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Oil bids. So remember, we're going to go off oil bids. We actually have two of them. Here, you can open that one. You can open that one. I haven't opened one. Want to do a public meeting? So the two bids are one from Hartman and one from Palmer.
So Palmer is at $4.299 per gallon per fuel oil.
$4.299?
And then propane, do we need propane?
Yes, we do have propane.
Propane is $2.099.
$2.099? $2.099?
$2.099.
Oh, great. Propane's come down in price. That's nice.
Hartman is located at $4.30 per gallon for oil for 15 days.
Yep.
Prepaid price is $4.24.
Prepaid, yeah. I don't know that we'll prepay, but okay.
Did you say propane's here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Propane with these guys, these folks is $1.99 for the 15 days and prepaid is $1.95.
All right, we get to do some math. Does it say when their bids expire?
15 July.
July 15, okay. Oh, that was, that was.
This is till Thursday, June 30.
6:30, oh, okay. All right, so that's all. Okay, great. All right. So Hartman's cheaper on the propane, Palmer's cheaper on the fuel oil unless we prepay. They're about the same, to be honest, on the.
Yeah, only cheaper on the propane?
Yeah, really only cheaper on, well, if we prepaid, Hartman's cheaper on both. They're about the same price on propane, right? On the fuel oil, I'm sorry.
$4.24 prepaid.
Right, but it's $4.299 or $4.30 just straight up, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's basically a, and on the propane, there's a 10 cent differential with a 15 cent on a prepaid.
Would we prepaid before?
No, I don't believe we have.
Is that something you consider with the oil markets?
It's always, you know, it's always a question of do you want to just take the price? I mean, certainly prepaid on the propane is probably not going to go much lower.
Yeah, what's he doing on running down? Still below 6 gallons?
Well, it's about 4.30 gallons of fuel oil.
Yeah.
But that's what their forecast is, below 6 is what they're trying to say.
Potentially. What we do is walk in our price. So anything we consume over the next year would be at that price. So if we prepaid at $4.24, you know, we'd prepaid a certain amount of usage. So looking at this, total fuel oil is about 1,200, 2,600, 3,500 gallons?
They reckon it's 3,600 gallons in terms of bid.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, I'm just looking at the numbers. So we're talking about $15,000, $15,500 at 4.30. And prepaid would be?
Wait, I see we have 2,500 gallons for oil.
So, oh, oh.
And then?
Right, because, yeah, the water and sewer department, that her report, they take care of that, I think. I don't think we cover.
Oh, so there's another question then?
We don't cover the fuel oil, no. That's, that's, that's theirs. Yeah, so it's really 2,400 gallons. Yeah, it's something. Yeah, about $10,000, it's about $10,000, which under the prepaid, we would save $125 in a prepaid. So. It looks to me that the.
It will be fixed by the way.
Yeah.
So this will be a fixed through the winter.
Correct, correct.
Is that one fixed or is that?
Is that variable?
No, it's fixed.
Yeah.
So then it doesn't matter what the prices will be in the winter?
Yes, correct. Just inclusive prices, yeah.
Because this goes, this one goes through April 30th of next year. Is that?
15 July.
Of next year?
No, this is both the bid or the option. This expires 15 July and this goes through May, February, 2023.
Okay, so this is through April 30th.
Okay, yeah, it's about a year contract, right? It's about a year contract. Basically, again, it's through the winter.
Yeah.
And we use very little, very little in the summer, in the springs.
Yeah, we get to fill up April 29th, it'll linger through the summer.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, that's what we just did, actually. We just had them top off the tank before we went out for bids. Because we just did it. So looking at the pricing, there's not a lot of differential except for on the propane. I mean, I would suggest that we take the Hartman bid. I don't see a compelling reason to go with Palmer, given that they're higher on the propane and about do identical on the, on the fuel.
And were you in concur to this prepaid?
I guess, yeah, we could prepaid. I mean, I guess you have to save $100 on the $10,000 bill. It's just not a huge amount of value there. Is, can we cancel at any time?
It's usually the minds of the prepaid, your lock-in, what you.
But you're locked in with these, that's what I was saying, is that since they're fixed, it doesn't.
Yes, the, the, these are all, yeah, these are all fixed, fixed pricing.
Good luck in that, because you're locked in for the contract.
What's that?
You're locked in for the duration of the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, the motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Hartman bid as a lower bid and offering on propane and fuel oil. And we'll get the contract from them for terms and conditions and look at that and make a determination as to.
Whether prepaid or.
Whether prepaid or not, yeah.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
I think we should follow up with the water department and just to make sure that, you know, that oil.
The fuel oil.
The fuel oil.
I'll host the handle, yep.
Is their responsibility now?
There. All right. Helping human services. So Pobie and I had a hard time adding properly.
Well, I'll take the hit on that because what is a hit?
Probably both had in front of us.
But I put it on the spreadsheet and do line and it all came out of $7,500. So some re-math in public.
So this is $500 of additional, of additional on the line, so.
So what I did is I came up with an alternative proposal.
Does it need more changes?
Like record and reallocated that 500, whatever you're supposed to do. So need to call for the manager.
How do you allocate on, yeah, hold on. Right, that's all. Which one's new?
The one with the red asterisk.
The new one?
Yeah.
$3.5. Should we make this more public here?
Thanks for your.
Oh, you just took the form and you spread it like that.
Like water, warm water, water in July.
All right, I'm not. I don't have any, I'll check, take a look.
So is this the new one of the assets?
Yeah, the red asterisk.
Not the one that says 14 June 9th? This is the old one?
That's the old one, again.
He basically added $50 to $100 across.
Go ahead. I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion to accept the revisions.
A second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll, I'm going to give that, yeah, I'm going to give that to Donna and into Donna.
Going to put the new date on there.
I'm putting new amounts. All right, thank you for that. Water and sewer district report. You probably got a handout, a multi-handout of our water and sewer district. This is just informative for the board. This basically indicates their MCLs for our contaminants. Do you want to read it now? You can always bring it back up later. If next time there's any questions. We also want to see correspondence from Comcast. So HP2 legislation basically established a grant program for the expansion of broadband. Comcast is one of the local providers here and has a franchisee agreement with the town for providing broadband services. And typically, under the grant program, Comcast would come and look at if there are any unserved areas in town and work with the town to say, we'll, we'll extend the service to these unserved areas. And if you, you know, we want you to work with us to get grant money under the program to help them pay to extend the service. It's typically what gets done. Now, I'm not aware of anywhere in Newfield that doesn't have service. Have you guys?
I don't, so we didn't have files on Main Street for a while. So I imagine that it's, the broadband is different than just regular internet.
Yeah, this is Comcast, so.
No, I understand, but the type of line that was, even here on Main Street, we didn't have that real high speed like.
The fiber of the home?
Yeah. So I don't know if that's a good, this would cover, but I don't think there's an issue in having them come and take a look.
No, no, no. And actually, I, you know, we can have, I'll reach out to Jay Summers and have him come by here to a meeting in July or August and have discussion about who is served, who's not served.
Cause it says right here that it's completed about last New Fields.
Yes, it is, they just work with us in terms of the grant money. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm not sure if there's any unserved areas.
I don't know if there is either, but I'm thinking maybe like, you know, for a...
It's worth a conversation with them.
Yeah.
One of the things I've seen previously is where a provider, I mean newer town and you agree, totally do like eighty-five to ninety percent of the town. And our previous select force, not New Fields, it's gone, yeah, that's fine by us, instead of the main event, the whole town recovered. And it was rather frustrating for the folks that were not covered in that process.
Yep. And that's really what HP2, um, kind of drove that, because, you know, the broadband providers will look at, okay, a town, let's not take New Fields as an example, but let's say, um, Franklin, right?
Or Bridgewater.
Right, and they might do kind of the village downtown area, but the more remote areas, they just won't run, because it's not even on...
Well, that's what they did here, like, that's why, like, they wouldn't, I think it was Verizon, they wouldn't...
I think it was Verizon, yeah, exactly. Verizon, Verizon when they're doing files was doing it on a very limited basis every year, like. Uh, and right now you see, um, what used to be consolidated running around there, um, their FABIDium or, I don't know, their, their fiber offering? They're, they're utilizing this program actually all around the seacoast to lay fiber up there. Uh, I think they're doing that under grant program, they're maybe doing it off their...
We, we were a quarter of a mile from where they stopped and they wanted four thousand dollars to...
Yeah.
And so, I'm not paying them four thousand dollars and I'd hate to see anybody in ten hours put it in that box.
So that's, that's really the purpose of this program is to address some of those, um, kind of infill, call it infill areas. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Jay Summers and, and ask him to come and see if we can't come to one of our July meetings and have a conversation about where they do, where they do not cover in town. Like I said, I'm not aware that there are any places in town they don't cover, but we'll have that conversation.
On that same vein, um, I would like to talk more about that developer for the solar that we got the correspondence from.
So, yeah, I...
The solar, the develop, the solar program that we got the email about.
Uh, the big problem is that the water department, um, all right, they have their shoulder panels down with the water department already. So you really can't use their usage, um, because it's already called for under their contract. Uh, the usage for the town is pretty low.
I wanted to see if, I don't know how to gather the electric bills and find out usage or anything like that to make a determination about whether or not it makes sense for them to come and...
Well, that's what I was, I, I took a look at, at our usage here in town hall and the fire department and our lighting. And all told, in a given year, we probably used, I think, fifty thousand per one.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Was the school included in that? I thought you said the school might have been.
Hmm, I'm not aware, I don't, we don't, we don't have their bills.
Okay.
We don't, you know, that's not, that's not our bid. Yeah, exactly, it's the school district. Um, but, you know, the water departments, typically water departments are part of towns as opposed to here, we know they're separate. Um, water department entered into a contract years ago, um, on, uh, on the, with one of the solo developers. And so all they tell what ours are, are basically spoken for. So, I, I mean, I can, I, I'll, um, I pulled some of the bills just to see what our volume was. Um, I'll get you a copy of those, you can look at them. I'm not sure if it makes sense given our, our volume, but I'll get it to you and we can always...
I didn't realize the water department did not have their panels already.
Yeah, it was about, I would say about four or five years ago. But I'll go through the numbers anyways, you can take a look now. Uh, all right, checks are all done, uh, prime meeting minutes, Tuesday, June fourteen minutes.
So first thing, Keesha, I was not here.
Yeah.
And you have me up here as present.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Was there a conversation held with Brian about these singles?
Uh, yeah, I reached out to Brian and, and, um, actually it was online, open eyes. If you want to wait, we'll... You guys all set?
Yes, sir.
Any other changes?
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Uh, all in favor? Aye. July meeting days. So, uh, July.
I'm here every Monday, Tuesday, but the twelfth.
Not the twelfth, okay.
I'm not here the fifth.
So you're, all right, nineteenth and twenty-sixth, uh, and perhaps we don't need the twenty-sixth, then you want, usually things get light in the summer. So let's tentatively schedule those two days. Um, and I'll talk to Derek about getting the, uh, water department's sale box for the nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, and we can...
And I do flip letter, maybe?
Yeah, uh, I, I, I can probably draft a release letter, a bullet from a standard release, just that I'm not on my laptop. Be pretty simple, just, um, simple access terms, so... All right, so that sounds good. Six. Uh, Judith, Ben, and yours, you should have those in front of you, if anyone just takes a quick look at those, and if there's any questions. Keesha, quick question, do we typically see more car registration second half of the year than first half?
Yes, I think it's, I don't know if it's, and I know like, is July is a slow, is it June, July is usually, it was one, but it's one not going to be.
Okay. I, the only reason I ask is we're about thirteen thousand behind half, you know, kind of the midpoint. Um, so we're a little under on car registration, which...
I can show this to you, but I...
Yeah, no, no big deal, I was just curious. Just curious, that's great, thank you. Keesha, did you know, did she want two of us to sign each, or is she just gonna have Dave come back on the same side?
Donna did not say anything, she left that for me after I left today.
Well, you're back tomorrow, right? Okay, I'm just gonna assume that she'll prefer Dave as opposed to just like... There's just one manifest.
There's, yeah, manifests.
I only saw one manifest. Get on this one? There's a second one in there?
No, one isn't.
Oh, okay, great.
They were like, in the dark, the ant checks.
Oh, okay. Um, any questions?
I do have a question, actually, uh, so some of these, so how are we tracking the ARCA funds? Because I'm noticing that some, um, departments have them listed under expenses, but like, there's, hmm... There's one under like general government buildings with the ARCA funds, but water and sewer and fire and police don't have those lines. And the, um, and the highway, the street don't, doesn't have a line for ARCA funds, even though they've been allocated some money. So how are we tracking that?
So, um, hold on a minute, I'm, I'm looking for the other... So, oh, okay, um, oh, there it is. So, yeah, so line forty, four one nine forty.
Right.
Right, has the ARCA fund line in it.
But that's just the expenses, and that's under government buildings?
That's correct. So I'm trying to identify one other ARCA fund line we have. So...
And that's, that was it, but we didn't, we just had it under government buildings, I didn't see it anywhere up here?
Yep. So in terms of accounting for ARCA funds. The ARCA funds are, um, you know, came in as unanticipated revenues. And the instructions from the DRA was, don't recognize it, you have to track it, and we have to report it to the US Treasury. But when it comes down to our formal budget, there's no, uh, it doesn't fall under our normal revenues or expenditures of our operating budget, okay?
Even if it's listed in here under our...
Yeah, this is just our revenue and expense reports.
Right.
But in terms of our formal budget itself, which is why you see, for example, on that line item at the top of page five, there's nothing in the budget there, even though we've actually expended, expended money under general government building for ARCA.
Right.
So, and so what, what that's saying is, we've spent funds here, but it wasn't under our formal budget, right? It's a zero sum. So this is really more showing us this as opposed to, um, these funds will, at the end of the year, fall into our budget category in our bottom line.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is there is no other ARCA fund line in any of the other departments, even though they've been allocated money. So that's why I'm wondering how are we going to track?
So I'm trying to think of who was al, water department was allocated, and then Rose was...
Then Rose was.
Uh, they, Rose might not have spent the money yet.
So will it only show up once they've spent the money?
I presume it will, but I'll talk to Donna about it and then I'll, I'll let you know. I'll let you know, but water department obviously was not going to show up yet. But, um, I'll find out about that, let's find out about the road one, because that's the only other one outside of general government building one that we did.
And the...
We did, the general government was, would be used for the matching thirty-five.
And we use some of it for the, um, tests and the...
Yes, exactly, yep, exactly, yep.
And then, so the amount that we have received from the ARCA funds in thirty-five zero ninety is fifty-three six fifty-four, but we had a total of one seventy-one, correct?
That's correct.
So...
The second tranche was supposed to be issued recently. I don't, I don't think it's, the state got it, I don't think they've done with this...
We have to see the other.
Yeah, I don't think the state has done the dispersment through municipalities.
And once it does, it would be on that line?
Yes, yep, exactly. As unanticipated ARCA fund.
Yep.
But I'll just find out about the, about the accounting board.
And we had some for the garden club, so does that, would that get put in?
Yeah, my garden, that might be buried in the general government buildings. Uh, but I don't know where she put it. But yeah, I'll, I'll, I can find out, just ask where the, all the allocations are going. Um, one other item before we go into non-public, or at least one that I have, is, um, the single that you raised. So, um, I sent you guys, talk to Brian about this. Um, given the location of it, he doesn't believe that this is actually, uh, related to any town assets. Um, and it is more likely something to do with the drainage coming off the building and their drainage collection in the parking lot, as opposed to any, uh, town stormwater. Given this, certainly, you know, what I saw it on there, uh, I would not be inclined to have the town address this issue unless, um, the owner can show that it's actually the town assets that, that did this. I'm inclined to assume that it's not.
The former town was going for south, it's like...
Um, west, so if, uh, oh, south, no, you're right, south, I was thinking, yeah, I'm looking west, so that, yeah, south. The, the current lines run down the access road to Coed and back parking lot for, um, the storage company. There was an old line that ran through the Grellas, and that's the one that was issued a couple, here we are. But that is eighty feet from, seventy, eighty feet from where these are occurring. These are occurring about ten feet from their existing manhole drainage, which is, that's their property, that drainage. Um, and that's just a simple drainage for them collecting, um, coming off the roof into the parking lot, so, um...
And they weren't, they weren't such a magnitude that was, just put some gravel in it?
No, it looks like it just, it needs a gravel pack, although I would certainly encourage, if, if it were me, I'd want to have somebody pull my drain cover on that and see if it's collapsed into like a drainage jar, which I suspect it probably is, and I think that's what Brian suspects as well.
So it's their own, their own drainage system that they built on into their parking lot that is causing it?
It likely, I, it, it certainly appears that that is far more likely to be the situation, because the town pipes, well, they're located a hundred and fifty feet away down the road, and the old pipe is... and the old pipe is about 70 feet and we addressed that years ago with the grellas and mid-patch and everything else up there. And the grellas haven't had to be any improvements there, so.
Just to digress for a moment, was that, there was a cove that ran under grellas, was that dug up or filled?
Very old, old pipe.
So it was collapsed in the.
Yeah, and what happened was, so when they put the new pipe in between Coed down the access road, they blocked off the old pipe up on Pleasant Street.
Yep.
And so they put the new pipe in and this was leaking into the old pipe.
And it just collapsed.
And it just created a sinkhole in the grellas lawn.
But that problem was definitely put in there.
That problem, they, we, we basically ripped up the grellas and followed the pipe back, figured out where it was, resealed that, and then refilled basically the entire yard and put their lawn back together. Years ago, because it was, it was the town pipes that did it. This, this incident certainly doesn't look like it's the town assets that are, that are causing the problem.
Did you make a motion in that process many ago?
No, I did not make a motion. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I mean, if you guys had a chance to go look at it.
I did.
So, I, I don't think it's a formal motion for us. What I'll, what I'll do, what I'll suggest sometimes, I'll draft a letter, I'll circulate to you guys to Mike O'Neil at, at the warehouse saying, based upon the information provided, you know, especially the road agents, you know, we don't feel that this is the town's responsibility. If in your pairs, you have indication that it is, we're, we're happy to have further conversations, but at this time, you know, we believe it's your responsibility, something to that effect. And I'll circulate it to you guys for approval and we'll get it out there, okay? All right. Anything else that you guys have for publicly?
We talked a couple meetings ago about the liaison with school board, there's a more meeting this afternoon.
Yep.
Bringing that up to see if we're looking at it or.
Oh, you know what? I, I have not, I, I think, you know, Chief had mentioned having a conversation with them. They're certainly interested, but I don't think any meetings could happen. I'll, I'll check with Chief, and I'll check with Tommy over too.
Okay.
I don't know if it's honestly really appropriate, given that we don't have any jurisdiction over what happens with the school safety plans because they're district plans, not developed by the board. And, I mean, we can have a conversation, but I don't think it's a, I don't think it's an appropriate place for the select board to be involved in that kind of school safety concerns.
I would, I would, we separately offered that your town resources would be involved in any response. At least on fire, EMS is contracted plus assistance to the community. And I think there's an opportunity for both the board and the town to ensure all these across the town as a whole.
But we don't have any jurisdiction over them, though. We don't have a say in their district safety plan because it's a district building.
Okay.
As my experience as a, you know, being in, like, school districts, it's not, there's not so much that we as a board have. I mean, we can do it as an informational thing, but it, I mean, it's not, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like something we necessarily need to call the school board in to have a meeting with them and the chief and have a whole formal thing.
I would offer that since we are using the town resources, law enforcement for response for any issue that transpires there and more resources from the fire department. And even though the school is pre-crued problems, by ensuring there's good communication flowing back and forth and put any potential problems in it by having those discussions and adding that communication. Yes, it is within our availability, it's also in availability with our police department, the fire department to respond to any issues that transpire and make sure that there's total communication through all parties and all channels.
True, but we're not going to be involved in any emergency that happens within, like, ours, like us as a select board, that's a conversation to have with fire and the police and we can have an informative meeting with the chief to read what the district safety plan is and, but we don't have any influence over how they're going to work their safety protocols because that's not a town.
I don't disagree with that, but what I'm offering is that by ensuring that this select board voices and shows its interest and concern and make sure everybody is, as far as the town resources are engaged, you would say the processes of the school, that there's no pitfalls, there's nothing that, that we are supporting every aspect of it and make sure, especially really insanity that's been happening in the past months, that we don't leave any option, any page unturned.
And what I'm saying is, is that it doesn't, we, it doesn't matter what we think, like, what our opinions are on what their safety plan is.
Well, I'm, I'm not offering that it's an opinion on our safety plan, just ensuring that there's adequate communication back and forth to the police department and the school.
And that's what I'm saying, is that we are not involved in that because it's not, the, the town government is not involved in the school safety issues. I think it's fine having a more, you know, an informational meeting, but it just seems like overreach for us to, you know, call in a school board member and the police chief to say, okay, well, do we have a safety plan in place? Like, what, what can we do with the information that they present to us?
Well.
Other than just having a.
Let me just say this. Certainly in light of recent events and certainly hearing about what happened down in Texas and what I would certainly at this point in time see as a lack of proper response by town officials, town police as to what happened at that, at that school. Probably worthwhile for us just to have a conversation with them. I don't think, to your point, Jackie, I'm not saying that we're gonna, we're gonna advocate or change or even, you know, suggest changes to their safety plan. I think as elected official, I'd like to have the comfort of knowing how well our school is communicating with our police and that the police, our police department understands what their goals and responsibilities would be in case of an emergency. Because given the response that happened in Texas, clearly, that type of situation hadn't occurred prior to that incident. And it's unfortunate, but I don't think the police understood or responded in there and I think a lot of people would find it difficult. So, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. Our role there as a board is limited, but I think we, in light of recent events, probably just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page. What their plan is, is what their plan is, but I wanna make sure our police department, our fire department know what those plans are and that the communication of who's responsible is very clear.
I'm just, I just don't think that it needs to be a whole meeting about it.
No, it would be, it would be a public meeting. This is something that, again, as, as the chief indicated, you know, you don't wanna talk about this in public. I think it would be a, a, you know, basically a, a, a non-public discussion about, just with the parties involved, just making sure, are you clear, are there questions that you have? Does the school have questions about what the town's going to do or not do? Do they have questions about what the, what this board is responsible for or not? I've never seen the safety plan over there, I don't care to unless the school wants to share them with me. But, you know, I, I don't think it's, it's, it's a, it's a bad thing in the light of recent events to at least have a conversation with everybody and make sure that we're all set up. All right. Any other matters, open items that you guys have?
I've got one thing and then it looks secondary. I've spoke to everyone since weekend about options for customers that are falling behind. There are myriad programs, they have a branding program out, I've got a good point of contact.
Great.
And references on how to handle that. They're very willing to work with anybody, anytime, any way, shape or form. And once somebody's engaged in it, they will not be cut off if they're making, and then won't pay.
Great.
So that, that addresses that issue. And I just had a question about the buffer fund and the allocation, I don't know if this is fine, get into that more.
Why not, I assume you're not talking about individuals?
So we, we've got a certain amount that we've allocated and should things continue in the direction which they train, are training in now and we see any grace of need, I would want that fund up to the tree of resistance.
Well, like any other line item in the budget, the, the one restriction on the board is the bottom line, our, our bottom line budget number O, uh, was approved, 1.9? Is our, our formal budget number, or something along that track? That's the bottom line number we have to adhere to, we can't go over. Everything within that is fungible, you know, we ask our departments to be responsible, operate within their budgets. If there's a situation where a certain line item may have to go over, typically it's a, you know, conversation that we have here. I'll give you an example. One year, at, at some point, we had a tremendous amount of legal issues just happened to crop up that year. And so we think about and talk about it on the board, but it's, from what you're describing, you know, it shouldn't be a problem.
I just, I wanted to raise it, so it's anybody's line with potential problems coming down the line.
Yeah, we can't raise our budget, we can't vote to raise it, yeah. It would just be all of us basically working to manage our budget over the course of the year, you know, within, within the total fly. Any other issues?
Anyone with a bid for the front walk?
I had asked Derek Rugg for a bid, he hasn't gone back from the act. I also spoke to Kent Lawrence and Kent said that he could do it, but he wanted to make sure that what he was doing was exactly what he wanted. He said he was just gonna bring up the front bricks to be leveled with a brand on each of the steps. Is that correct, was there more than just the steps?
No, but I, I think the tripping hazard is where those bricks are falling on the steps, right?
Okay, so he said he could do that for $2,000, roughly. He would say he'd do it by the hour. He hasn't put anything in writing, that was a verbal call to the gate. He said he could come in and talk to your board and you just wanna make sure that what you expect is what he's gonna do. He's not gonna, he's just gonna bring them up level.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
That's right.
All right. Was there something with the?
We did the rail already.
Do we have to re-point something else or is it just the stairs?
No, I think it's just the steps we have to re-line, yeah.
Great, thank you, sir. Sure.
Anything else? All right, I will make a motion that we're going to non-public under 91832C. There are matters need to be discussed with the town.
Sir.
Second, by Hoby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.